Well, since the turn is here, we'll stop.
Yeah, well, thank you for another beautiful wet day. Be with all these people represented here and their families. Get us home safe tonight. Help the council make the best decision for the city. Be with all our first responders in Oregon and our military. Ask all these things if you press the name. Amen.
Our flag is a nation to the land of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. The invisible, the liberty and justice for all. You'll find red over the general.
We got, I got an amendment that, uh, nine C with removal of two trees.
And nine D, discussion of the letter procedures.
What was that nine C?
There's a.
Two, three.
You have ones up here. Before we do the dumpster, this leaning is really bad. So I can fall anyway. We're gonna cut it down to plan level. And there's.
It's when you come into town, there's one like right at that triangle out there that keeps getting worse. As the guy said, they think that you're getting.
And what was the other thing that was added?
Code letters.
Code letters.
And I want to back move.
I'd like to move the, what is it, the dingo for the damage to C and D.
All in favor?
Three seconds.
Okay. Number five, public appearances.
Lamar Cutt Nelson. Since the mayor's not here for the report, I'll defer to the mayor pro team. What is the status of the intergovernmental agreement going Nelson and the two towns?
Well, we turned back from one, we haven't turned back from the other.
Right, I didn't hear anything additionally today, so I didn't know. Ask them, Pickens, what the status was, I never back yet.
Waiting on face or waiting on Pickens?
We'll work part one top to raw.
Do we know exactly whose desk it's hung up on?
No.
The chairman knows about it as well also.
The commissioner said he thought, but him and the chair had approved that he's going through the attorney right now. The last time I talked to him. He had already discussed it with the chair and, uh, they was gonna be willing to help us out.
So what is our expectations? Will we know anything this time next month?
I'm hoping.
Sure, surely is.
Is anybody gonna follow up?
Yes.
Uh, down in section eight concerning the street signs. There's, uh, just an example of probably how we don't really keep up with the status of the signs in the city. There's a sign right at the entrance to Laurel Lake subdivision coming up from the south. That's sitting like this. Sixty degree angle.
So that wouldn't drive around being even.
Who knows, it's been that way for months, maybe years. But I would think we'd have some kind of period of maintenance plan. Where somebody will go, go around and look for stuff.
We actually just did that and just made a spreadsheet of a list of all the signs, what streets they're on, which ones need to be replaced. And I'd go through and make a list of the ones that were good condition, what needed to be cleaned, how to clean them. If they were then viable or if they needed to be replaced.
Listen, did you say you're making a list?
I have, I have a spreadsheet and then I can do a printout and there's a list of the ones that need to be replaced.
Is that something that you think would rise to the occasion to be reported back to the people? Other than just know about.
I can give you a copy, I only put a copy of it online. Cause I mean, me and John do it and then I went around, cause it's real easy to miss them, cause I caught a couple. You know, so there may even still be a couple that haven't been caught.
Right.
But we're trying.
Let's see. Section eight, discuss nature trail repairs in that peak. Isn't that something that just should be, you know, routine matter, somebody maintain that?
It is, but need to know what type of product, the product we bought last year was called Bill Better. Supposed to stay in place better. It's on the stuff that came in with it, really big chunks.
Right.
And we were having complaints from people that, you know, you can't jog on that.
Yeah.
Um, there's, there's a couple of areas that keep washing out that either needs to have a drain installed. Or we need to put gravel in that area. Just more having everybody on the same page and sending the guys out to put Band-Aids on things and we keep replacing it.
I'm sure you'll be discussing this in depth, but I just wanted to put in my two cents worth of, uh, issue. I feel the trail should be, you know, maintained, somebody's in charge of doing it.
I agree.
Keeping it going. Thank you for getting the lines on the highway that I brought up a couple. Few months ago. Now I have another sign. There is a huge indention slash pot of, of by the stairway company. On the right hand side of the road as you go south. And you can get an idea of how good your suspension is in the car when you go over there. I know big trucks go in through there, so if you don't have that in your immediate plans for taking care of road problems. I would suggest that any of you all of you go out there and look at that.
Down on Rock Corner or?
Yeah, right. When you go in south, just about the time you're beginning to pass stairway company on the right. There's like a hopper there, old shavings, I guess. Yeah, there's a big indention down through the concrete. I mean, it's not down to the dirt yet, but it's, it's a huge depression.
You ask Jim, keep it in price, cause he's counting what everyone's done anyway, give it their price to him.
And that's all I have today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Michael, I have a question, Wayne. Biggest concerns recently are questions about these speed bumps. What's the status on these before I ask any more questions?
Well, we're planning on discussing it and see how many of them we can take up. If some of them we can take up now, but since traffic slowed down a little bit.
When I guess y'all decided to put these down, what are the stipulations? Were these looked into or is there just a homework that if people going fast down the road, I'm worried about my kids, we just went out and bought some speed bumps and put them on?
Now we had complaints.
Because I spent probably fifteen, twenty minutes while I came here to do a little research. And the look that I found is, which I've got is, I don't know where it's legal. But the speed bumps, uh, should be speed humps. Speed bumps are not particularly used for private road, public roads. Speed bumps are used for private roads and driveways, parking lots. Speed limit is twenty-five, you cannot hit those at twenty-five miles an hour. And also concerned with emergency vehicles. How, fire trucks, ambulances, you know, we're, we're so concerned every year that we bring out our maintenance guy to brush what a little bit of ice and snow off the streets. And how do we clean the streets? How do we allow the emergency vehicles to get there with these speed bumps there? You know, like I said, what I've read, they're not, they're not legal.
But you think?
I think we look for, you know, rash of judgment and just throw them out without.
I'm aware of a word of law that indicates. What? I mean, there are recommendations in all kinds on traffic devices, but there's nothing that prevents you from putting speed bumps on them.
Is there any way we can put them just at the stop signs?
Well, that's usually when they hit thirty miles an hour chasing somebody or a fire truck or an ambulance.
I mean, this one is gonna be left permanently, I think it needs to be a speed hump. These were done more just as a temporary.
Speed humps slow you down to fifteen, twenty miles an hour. Anything more than that, you need to damage to your vehicle. These right here, if you hit fifteen, ten, we came here like, you know, ten miles is, you know, we're not gonna get it comfortable. Anything over that's just, and it's ridiculous, I mean, it's, I go through four of them in the morning and, and it's. Been here for nineteen years and never had a problem. We get one or two people coming in. We had a problem years ago, came up here, talked, they put a sign, kids are playing, never had an issue again. If, if we must maintain them and keep them there, I guess we can wait, probably come back next month, but I have a whole list of streets that I think we need to put them on as well. Cause as I ride my bike and, and drive through town, I see speeding on every street in town, so. If we do one, two or three streets, just leave one off, let's, let's holler joy, let's tell everybody the speed on us. All in that same. So what's our, our plan in the future? What'll we do in this, I mean, next month are we gonna vote on this or?
We're supposed to vote tonight to pull up and get rid of them. And that's why I mean it's on the agenda for ten large, but since there's the council vote to put them down, he's giving the council vote to pick them up.
Just have two questions. Come on, Heather Shaw. You stated that traffic has slowed down. Why?
Cold to have to stop for. And cross them.
No, I mean, I'm saying traffic has slowed down through that?
There's speed.
Just through that one area, correct?
Well, all around town. Where there's a speed bump, you know, you gotta slow down and cross them.
The people that live across the street don't have some faith in us, people slowing down. But we also have complaints from people that live there and now they're going into the yards to try to go around them.
Correct.
It's a can't win situation.
Well, yeah, we're gonna do the speed humps. Um, also, so we pay the city guys to go up there and clean up the mud. Let people go around the speed bumps and track on the road.
They'll go up and sweep it up sometimes. I mean, the speed bumps aren't put down as a permanent matter, it's not something that's gonna get you left there, it's more just to get somebody's attention. Slow down. That wasn't ever meant to be permanent.
And one that's got me really puzzled is why ain't that a speed bump at a stop sign?
Cause they're wrong, cause they don't know how to stop.
They weren't even tapping, they don't think we're extending them.
Then something else has gotta be done. I mean, I mean, well, first off, they gotta be a hundred feet from a stop sign, so you can't ride out of a stop sign. So, no, I was just curious to how those were.
Anybody else? Okay, approval of amendments on February the third.
I'm gonna make a motion that approves amendments from February third.
What's that? All in favor? Mr. Salmon, did you get the top amendment?
It's February. We have eleven calls. Um, kinda way I wanna break this down. We had, we responded to three separate domestics on Turp Street, but they were all interrelated. Uh, one of them is technically on March first, so it's not totaled up in here. Um, and the rest will be on August, who in those? Um, we went to H and X Hollers down here, just inside of the city. They had a terminated employee that finally brought his truck back from California. They wanted us to be there, but he didn't bring everything back, so we ended up having to go back at the same time. Helped out Pickens County with the column, Blue Ridge Avenue that, um, we actually beat them there, I think, on that one. And then we transported one for them that had worn out of Cherokee County. And then we had the accident at the big entrance of Laurel Lake, but there wasn't any injuries on that. And then, talking about speed, um, you know, last month we talked about putting the speed boxes out. But I told you we can only put ours on the Cherokee County streets. Uh, so we put one out on Old Nelson. And our traffic department is taking it up. They'll download it and they'll print out, give me the data and when I get it forward to the, you know, what's going on with that. I did notice, you know, when it, you know, when it would come up, you know, people were slowing down. See, it's like, wait, what's that? So they did, they did slow down on that. Um, that was, that was pretty much it, a couple of alarm calls and stuff like that. And that was to give them up the brakes, that they were wet. Any, any questions or any problems?
Now, thank them for putting that sign, I think them will have a lot.
We were gonna put one up on, on Kennesaw Avenue coming in, but there's, it was just, by the time you get down there, you're already in Pickens, you know, yeah. Unfortunately, we can't put, like I said, we can't put them on in Pickens and we have to keep them on Cherokee sides.
Now, who puts one up here close to mine?
Did y'all only have one out?
Far enough, it's a little.
Cause there was another one on the same street on the Pickens side.
Yeah, it flashes.
Yeah, was it, looked like the same thing.
I don't know, I don't know if that was Harv or Pickens County.
I'm not sure.
I think it's Pickens.
Thank you. All right. You got the mayor's report?
Yeah, I think that all that, that he said on the street was, cause I.
We got enough for days for April seventeenth through the twenty-seventh.
And then we're gonna start locking down.
We're gonna start locking the bathrooms on this to down.
Just the park area, we didn't have other, it'd have been like if families go down in the evenings, but when it's dark, you might people. Go in there anymore.
Seventeenth, twenty-seventh.
It was that like the weekend after Easter, we kept hitting like between spring break and Easter and everything.
The camera guy, did you get him to look that portal film and got seen if they can't make it work up here through the dumpsters?
It has to just do with the cell phone signal, there's nothing you can do to adjust that up.
They didn't say one, so for sure, no good.
It's, we don't pay, it's like it just picks up whatever service is there. It wasn't like, we didn't want to sign up at eighteen or something with Verizon, it was just whatever cell net, what they could pick up. So like down here, it's nothing, it was absolutely nothing, they won't pick up at all. It works fine on Pickens Street halfway up, maybe. It just has to be recharged.
Downstairs, is it?
So what we have is like one camera on there as it is. They really need to have one coming from the other direction. We had two people put mattresses in there. We go over and find the trucks, like I, one of the trucks I've seen again since then, I don't know who it is, and then the other one, it was just like your generic like work truck.
So we just need to charge that one, take it up our system.
Need to be charged and then set it back up.
Cause most cell phones will work up in there, or mine.
Yeah, and it may be perfectly fine there, I just know that here, they couldn't even activate it.
Yeah, mine won't work here too, really. Miranda, you ready to talk?
I am, Holloway's ready to talk.
Come on, let's do it for a bank seat.
I'm gonna get your person's phone, please. Um, okay, so let's go over the bank balances right now. Um, the general fund as of the end of February was six hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Um, cash reserve was one hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven. SLOSS two thousand and eight, um, three hundred and ninety-one dollars, we need to figure out what to do with that.
Yeah, it's gonna keep going inactive. And the printout that I have in there was from Thursday, so.
So any smaller project that we have or anything that we need to do, that's.
Low science.
No, that's a management statement. And SLOSS three is a hundred and three thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. Um, SLOSS two, which is the Pickens, is four hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. SLOSS four, which is Cherokee, the, the older one, um, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. And then SLOSS five, Cherokee, the new SLOSS, is two hundred and forty thousand and six dollars. Um, okay, so another thing I would like to be to. April meeting, I will be submitting to you guys a budget calendar for this upcoming budget adoption. Um, for this year, twenty twenty-one. Um, with that being said, in April, can we go ahead and plan to have a work session in place? Because we need to discuss budgets, so we know what we're doing going forward, before I get the draft together. Um, so if you would make it over that.
I'm trying to do, I think there's sixteen, there's, I guess that means the Friday, we just won't start the dumpster days.
Okay.
Does that work for you, ten April, April sixteenth? So if you can week after, right?
You can count it, that's in my old, the April meeting.
April should be.
I think so, the, the dumpster days start on the front, which is the same. Or that potentially, April sixteenth.
All right, so in regards to the budget, as far as we're at right now, uh, which should be fifty-eight percent or less. Um, David, you pointed out earlier about the contingency line item being over. We are, um, kind of waiting until April to do a budget amendment, so we would be more aligned where we're, we're supposed to be in. Because once you do those amendments, you, if you do, it's easier to do the whole thing as a whole. Um, but our revenues are actually exceeding, we're coming in at nine, nine percent already over what we anticipated, um, for this year. Mainly due to the, um, the insurance premium tax from the state. Um, it came in at a hundred thousand this year instead of what we budgeted at eighty-seven, which was pretty much over last year. So, um, that's a good thing. But we're able to use that money whenever we're gonna offset for the contingency line item. Um, because those are things that we have approved to do after the budget was approved this year. So, um, that's a good thing, we're in a good, good standing with the budget so far. Um, most, all is departmental level, which should be fifty-eight percent or less. Um, we're running pretty good on all of that. All of these are under except, um, the museum miscellaneous is just sixty-seven percent. And then the city council expenditures, um, which everybody's had good training, so once you do that, then, um, there's no more, really, that's it. And other than that, that's pretty much all I have.
The electricity for parks and that could come a little bit high too, which we have them come out, may have pulled come out and looked and it had to be with the heaters in the bathroom. Took it on, so we have maintenance guys trying to do some, and we had to keep it around fifty. And there's not a thermostat, so you have to just kind of play with it, but it should, cause the power for that was higher than the power for everything else in the city that went on, street lights. But it was like two fifty for the bathrooms and.
But even in that, we'll be able to transfer within that, in that departmental that.
Yeah.
We have not repairs and maintenance and we've still got side improvements, so we've got, we can do a transfer in there and we're fine.
Yeah, the next one should be last, I'm assuming.
We're about to start rocking and rolling with our budget adoption, budget process and capital. We think about SLOSS and our capital budget too, is what was our general budget.
Does the mayor have a, have a meeting in Cherokee County? Well, we're gonna meet with, uh, Jerry Cooper next week.
I'm not sure, she said she.
One day next week.
It was just the, like the initial, when you get it set up, see who to meet with, before they actually go in, they need the meetings for that stuff. It's kind of like there's a pre-程序.
Yeah, then we're gonna meet them. Uh, and the engineer that's gonna be looking after it and we'll give them a late in this. I'll make an engineer. Yeah. Well, yeah.
We're good at that stuff, so come in with it.
Since I'm not getting retired, I'll do, you can take over. Anything else on the budget this week and all that? Which is what you discussed, I'd like to understand it more when we do the fair, explain a few things.
Can I sit down however?
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, but this is kind of a financial thing, I'd like to, they wouldn't notice checks in here, where we wrote these checks this last month?
Yeah, that's on the actual, the bank statement, they only have the ones in the.
I'd like to see us, when we write the checks and somebody comes in and sign them, just make a copy of them, make, put them in forever, you know, just have them available. Just do that every time and that, cause after that, my guy from the bank, he can't even.
Yeah, yeah, those are like, well, they're also like money, you're talking.
But the copier, whatever they use, let them use it.
Yeah.
If we can just do that, when we sign checks, make a copy of them and give us all of them. And that way we see them.
Do you want all the support and stuff that goes with it, or does it come with the check? Cause like.
I mean, there's something out of the ordinary that, like power building and stuff, we know what that is, but anything, it's, we're paying out that we have the order. There's something we can't just figure out on our own pretty easily.
Like, like fun stuff, right?
Yeah, simplify.
Just dumb it down, something.
Yeah.
That's the way I like things, we know a lot easier than, than you're getting with this one.
All right, anything else? All right, other finish business. This is the street sign, this is what we call.
This is what we were almost talking about a little while earlier. The list of signs, um, is kind of out of the ones they've identified that need to be replaced. There's a few of them that they have in stock. Went around, did the three estimate thing. Um, James said a long time ago, they actually used to purchase the street signs from Cherokee.
Cherokee can?
Which I didn't know, so we called when he was in there and they said we could. But I've been waiting on a call back from the guy that's in the department, so I'm assuming the prices would be better than what these are. Um, but until, I kept thinking I'd get a hold of them in the past couple of days and have it.
I would compare them, I mean, yeah, sure, they're cheaper.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They, um, there were a couple issues ran into, somebody stole the Welcome to Nelson sign coming in from, from Kennesaw. Like it's just, the poles are there, they literally just unscrewed into design. Um, and then the ones that's coming in from Jordan Road, or not Jordan Road, Old Nelson Road, the guy said it was a pretty bad shape. From the, what I've found that are here, and I don't know if Cherokee can remake the current one, they don't offer that design pattern anymore. Um, so the option is, if Cherokee can replace the ones we have, then that's fine. Otherwise, we actually have seven Welcome to Nelson signs coming in from different directions. So do we replace the two that need to be replaced and leave the old ones? Being different designs, or do we go ahead and just change everything over since we have a new seal, new logos? And just make it a one-time thing? If you're buying one sign, it's a lot more than it is to buy in bulk. So, just something to kind of think about. There were a couple of signs too, there's one that's a no passing one, solid one, it's right at center line. Um, that you can't find, it has to be made, so then you get into the custom thing. Which some of them were terrible, but some of them were. Which some of them weren't terrible, but some of them were a little ridiculous. John went down and checked the sizes of some of them. Some of them, the sizes, like the ones here that has WS by it, the sizes that are offered are not the sizes that we currently have. Which aren't gonna make a difference with a lot of things, but with the shuttering areas down there. I think it totaled six of them, if I remember correctly, and one in the middle is gone. So right now, the ones that you can find are about ten inches smaller than the current ones that are out there. And again, it might be some that the county can do, but, you know, it's not a big deal. But I just wanted your thoughts, especially since it's a good bit over the threshold. And some of these places didn't even offer some of the signs. They just weren't available at all. And then, with the ones that we have, are each from fifteen hundred up to a little over three thousand. The last two columns, they had a lot of them that weren't even available. Econo signs are giving normally where we're from. But again, hopefully Cherokee's coming out to be a better price. But since it's over that threshold, we just need to decide how to proceed. Or if you really just set it, like, or if we get them from Cherokee, under X amount of money. If someone else wants our shipping, we can have them from Cherokee, so send guys that we get them.
So it's three thousand seventy-nine total for all of them you need.
That was the ones under road traffic signs, and they didn't offer some of them. Like, the ones there that don't have them in there, they didn't offer them. So the prices were that high, even with some of the ones that we can't, couldn't get. And same thing with the safety sign. The ones that are NA, they didn't offer them. So Econo signs are the ones that normally order from, and they have almost everything that you need. But some of the sizes weren't the same as the ones that we currently have.
And it's twenty-seven eleven, seven three.
Yeah.
And that's for everything you need, except?
That was for everything, except the no passing, one solid line, is right at the center line. Well, actually, that's there, because it was under eighty-one dollars, because it was customized. And that's, something like that sign Ricky said is actually a wood pole. He doesn't know how long it's been, I don't know if it's one that's still needs to be there, or it's one that. Not sure.
Rent can it be paid for out of SLOSS?
No, it should go to the bank.
I think if you're buying signs, couldn't you? When you're appearing, no.
If you're purchasing, you can't. It's kind of an empty thing. We've done it in the past.
There's lots of things.
When they check the house. When they check the house.
I would just ask.
I would just, yeah. Don't want to do it, then I can buy this, but.
I mean, if you're buying them bulk, I think it's one thing, like, if you're buying a sign here or there, that's also.
Well, that's why, and I really don't think it would quite cost a lot of money, but. And it's kind of like the Welcome to Nelson signs. It's kind of like, we're gonna save the money and do it, then we're not just having new ones done, and have a new seal, and you. And you can have, if you want something on there, other than the clawback and thing, you have a chance to put something in there, you know? Any thoughts? Do you want to wait in the pricing, or do you want to just set a cap on it, because I'm ready to get it from this, and I'm, and we can figure, you can put in SLOSS?
Is that twenty-seven eleven, that is, that's seven of the two links I have?
Yeah, that's with seven, if they're the one sixty-one thirty. And that's still a very plain Jane sign. If they're forty-eight to thirty-six, they're big signs. But that was still, it's a two china, with a block with white letters, or green with white letters, kind of thing.
I want to see what Cherokee can do, and come look at it in Paris next month.
We can do that, and that's what I was saying, if you want to wait a month to do it again, or if you want to put a cap on it, like, if we can get it for under this price. Then go ahead and do it. Otherwise, we wait, and then bring it back down here again with more pricing. So we'll talk.
Say what they can do. If I could have it cheaper, I don't see a problem with that. I don't just sign quality, sign.
I may just go down and read it, because we said the guy that took the book, the sign barn thing, doesn't have a phone with them, they just send the messages, so.
So we can get more information on. Okay, we're through with that. And that's your back of speed bumps.
Fun stuff.
Yeah, fun stuff.
We currently have fourteen speed bumps, which is a total of seven set on Pickens Street. Blue Ridge Avenue has a, means two sets on there. During the meeting, Mayor Green said she would, some of them will be removed after thirty days, which is where at that point now. We need to decide which ones are gonna be removed, if there will be any additional ones installed. And we have had requests for additional ones put further out on Nelson. Which now boxes have keeped in, one lady, and her loss has been taken out four times. She's called twice, and she's actually coming here in the plus of a set, there.
I'm afraid it might be like the old gray mountain road, being knocked off of the ball back, these two guys.
You definitely need to take some of them up.
Yeah, and when they check them, some different type, but they weren't way too.
Well, if they're gonna stay at their permanent, then it's, like you said, they need to be speed humps, they don't need to be speed bumps. These are more just noting that they're portable. And if they're gonna be the humps, then you may want to have them, just don't want to ask for, because the cordons, they're like fifty bucks a section, I think. And each section's like twenty-four inches. And then you have the end caps on them, so you're really good. I mean, it's a chunk of money to get one that will go all across the road.
I'm fine with taking them up if we can, who stops, uh, put those stop stops out.
At least take them off Pickens Street.
So just remove them all for Pickens for now?
Yeah.
Or at least put them back a hundred feet from the stop sign. Well, still, if you hear them running fifteen mile an hour, they're not probably that.
I mean, aren't they legal per emergency vehicles, not interrupts, but, I mean.
We have just checked on it, and I think there's, there's not, like, legality specifically saying you can't.
There's a whole enormous, uh, beautiful traffic design standards that goes into all that. None of this is legal or illegal, it's recommendations.
Yeah, and since they were tempered, it wasn't ever meant to be a permanent thing. The one I was concerned about is.
What about the one, one way, not both, one, you know, one, either coming or going?
Well, we try.
Emergency traffic, that'll never pass.
Same with Gary, and they need to off the traffic, drive like a ten minutes along around that midline.
We're afraid somebody hit, somebody hit on them.
So if you want to vote on a maya bowl, since we go with two, because they're in front of there.
Yeah. What do you think, think of the Pickens Street?
I'd say take them all, but I think Martha wants a battery in front of her house. Someone to drive with.
I'm more worried about the kids that are riding the golf carts and flats.
I'd talk to them.
I mean, they're gonna kill somebody.
I'd talk to them.
Underage people.
Have you seen them the past couple of weeks?
I hadn't seen, well, I hadn't seen them since Stu's gone in, but sometime, I mean, you know, I walk, and they just, I hear this one day, looking at the whole cell phone.
Well, I talked to the parents about two weeks ago, and just had a conversation, like, just off the books conversation.
Take one of them, let them ever do.
Yeah, well, that's the one I talked to. And it was horrible, because I don't think it was, I think the parents might not have known. So if you see them again doing it, let me know, we'll do that. Pickens and Cherokee.
All reasons of the speed bump.
Yeah, well, no, there were several people that came in, and so I called and just talked to the lady, and. I haven't had any complaints since we talked to her. It doesn't even look to be out, but.
Right.
If they are, then we can ask the police to deal with it at that point.
Right.
Because I know for sure what went on. There was one that went down yesterday. But it was more like a dune buggy thing, it didn't, it was like gray or black, all matte color or something. And they went slow, but I haven't seen that one before.
So, so thanks to them, it's getting on the walking trail, too.
It was, I would bet.
I mean, I walked out there today, about four thirty, you'd see where Haiti Bay or something.
I've seen a lot of times, people call, just have them to check, but it's one of those, they're never down there for a length of time. They go down and do the little donuts, and then take off, and you'll see Cherokee County come in five, ten minutes later, and they're gone.
When it snowed, the four-wheelers were on the walking trail, just tearing it up. They came from over towards Little Lake. I saw them, when they, they was tearing it up.
Is that your kids?
I'm little little legs.
Do we have signs?
Ninety percent certain that we do, although we checked it, but I'm pretty sure there's a sign that says that.
Pretty sure there is.
And they get some of rules sign, but it might be worth looking at, get a second sign.
Probably more signless.
I think Mother's shop coming out there one day, and that's been a while.
Do you want more of the speed bumps? On Pickens Street, all of them.
Miss move them all.
Make a motion, we remove all of them, and look into the speed humps, and do a little research on where they would best be used.
Yeah, see, we could do that when we replace the streak, you know, with asphalt, at least make, at least.
Something that when you slow down, it's something to store your vehicle.
One little lady gets here last month, you know, she said she joined media. She couldn't get over them.
Don't matter.
I second your motion, a little more.
You gotta move them, second all in favor. Okay, discuss and put it on the dish, and you can't without the reference.
I was in the other way, I was in Pickens Street.
I'll let all of them.
Okay, we purchased two cameras to install at the new park. They came out, looked at stuff, gave us us, and I'd get it done. Hang on, put the cameras in, came in the next day and hook it all up, and he goes, oh, we already have fifteen cameras, now you have seventeen, and you only have capacity for sixteen. Tried to ask him, and he won't listen to that, but anyway, so we now have access to sixteen out of the seventeen. He said that the next step up from that was to add it, call it NDR, which I'm not sure what that is. It's nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, but it will allow us the capacity to add sixteen more cameras going forward.
You'll be adding sixteen more?
Yes, on that one, and the hard, the storage capacity thing, it'll come with some, so I think we were at four, and we added. Yeah, we were at eight, we had a four, and then each one of those things we got done before. So it would put us up to sixteen.
I checked the DVR system out the other day, and we got a couple. That's not being utilized over at the, where the Rebecca Lodge is in the building.
Yeah, there's three, I think, on that building.
Yeah, we, I mean, instead of upgrading the system right now, I'd recommend we. Should take a couple off that building, you know, put them somewhere where they might be a little better used. Because both of the entrances of that building, we've talked about, demolishing or covering.
So. Well, there has been stuff that is by missing from that building. We don't know when, but I know when we checked for stuff, not Christmas, a couple months ago, Christmas last year. Jane and Sylvia and I went in, they had stacks of tables and all kinds of tiny chairs. We went in this year to go get some of them, and there's a lot of them aren't there anymore. So it's just something to kind of keep in mind, too, but again, those cameras aren't gonna hit, because I think it was the lower doors that might have been entered.
The one on the upper, it gets department.
One of them, like, if you're looking at the building, one that goes out and hits the intersection, like, coming into town. One hits, like, going up towards the railroad tracks, and then one hits directly across at the park. So it's just hitting different aspects of town. Which, when we've gone back to look, we actually do, anything with a park area, cars that are coming together, whatever, all of those cameras end up getting checked. The one hitting, I guess, going towards the intersection and leaving town, will probably be less so than the other two. But at some point, we do need to put some city hall facing the other direction, because we currently have one hitting that.
We have the parking lot out here.
We voted also to put a generator in, which made up before my time, it hasn't been done, but. At some point, if we do that, we need to have something that hits that. We've also had reports of people coming up in the parking lot and doing the third things at night sometimes. That our cameras don't catch, because they were doing it there, instead of in front of the door.
Can we have him move one off of this building down here? Do you want to look at them, see what's going, if that could be moved? Could they shine up this way?
The, um, the half court on Pickens. The camera they have there shows the whole court in the parking lot, I mean. We voted to put two, but I don't really see a need for the second one.
Well, right, yeah, I'm not sure with the second one, we're at it right now, and when the part's done, there won't be more reason to have it there, because right now, for what?
Maybe put one on your, where you're talking about.
If they, I wonder if there's not a way to put it on the corners that kind of hits everything.
And take one off the building, I mean, we could swap it pretty much, you know?
Yeah.
And it'd keep us from having to upgrade the DVR or whatever it is.
NDR, which, one of the initial things.
Yeah, in the future, he needs to let us know the total cost before.
I think, well, normally he would come out and, and check it, and he sent the guy that works for him, so I don't know. You know, because like I read back through the emails, and it's like, I could see it, but it's kind of like, the guy that came in, didn't check to see what her capacity was. I can see how it will be an oversight, I guess, is what I'm doing, too. So I'm gonna tell him, I'll wait on that for now and check, and I'm, and I'm gonna ask how much it's gonna cost to kind of move them, because these are charging, because they're going down here.
We could move them one up there, at the high basketball court, for sure, because we sure, I mean, you know.
He didn't install the second one, did he?
Yeah, they were both installed.
Oh, they both installed?
Because he did the installation on Thursday, to get all the, they were having problems with one of the. Like, the reception things, the radio signals, so it took most of the day, and they came in on Friday, and actually set this up here.
Make a motion to remove the second camera from the Pickens Street park, and utilize it somewhere on this building that we see necessary.
I see you. All in favor?
Yeah, because that second camera, we can't even access right now, so even if we do it, we still can't access it.
Just cut one off from that building, put a new one up over here. The lower one, probably the one to turn off, the one that, that shows that marble wall going towards Kansas River Avenue.
Yeah, because I want, like, if one regard, I have to look at stuff, that's the one that is used the least, because you can't see a whole lot.
And the one showing the front door at the top level of the building, it needs kind of turning towards the park.
Yeah. Do you want me to get a price from him first, or do you want to just cap the price, and have it done?
I hope this, we can get it, ask him now.
Just play it back in the next meeting.
Yeah, yeah, it shouldn't be that expensive, surely. All right. Discuss nature trail, keep hiring, that'd keep.
Okay, this is the, basically what the Martin talked about earlier, when you just, basically, repair and maintenance. There's several areas that continues and wash out and get, it's not mud, like, where you can kind of walk through and walk around it, because there's stuff around it. But it's, you know, sometimes three or four inches, you just can't get through. It's been an ongoing issue. I asked the guy from the landscape company, and he said you could either find a way to slow the water down from all funneling into that one area. Or you can kind of dig out a little bit, and put, like, just a small drain that goes under the ground, and look at your gravel, and roll strike over it. And, or try to fill it with gravel, and see if that works. And there's also been complaints, but they're just getting slippery, I think there's some old stuff, which we can pressure wash some of that and get it off, but I don't know if the ceiling, that the, your ceiling has grit in it. Just to give you a little more, um, traction going over it.
That's rigging what needs to be done. We have pressure washing. Put the rig in. Ricky, not to have a pressure one, yeah.
They do, but it's, I don't know if they can get it all the way back there, or something, they're needing a tank or something, because it's not a hose.
Yeah.
Not successful that far out.
They got four little tanks, we may have to purchase a tank.
Yeah, I think we have one, and somebody shot it.
Shot it, shot it.
They fill it up with water, and you know, go off.
They need, that, that lower bridge, make big calls, you can't even walk on it, the one that goes up the hill.
Uh, the one with the strips on it?
Yeah, I like to fail on it, just letting it, when I walk around, I got. I like to fail on this, when I walk around, I got it.
Yeah, well, I went the other day, but it wasn't raining, but it's when I think it's when it gets really bad. And there's, I think some pictures in there.
Which one are they?
Might have to get on, get on schedule in corner league pressure washing or something like that.
I think so, but we need to see if they, if there's a way they can get back there, if we can just find another tank to just get it taken care of. And some of the benches back there, I went around to take pictures. Okay, one of the, you know, I see. For the ones, I think it's on the third page that has that really bad area and it's always the, the top.
They're not doing the maintenance that they should do out there. I mean, I walked through the, today, after the rain and took my foot and kicked out a few places and drained most of that.
Yeah.
They didn't go out there every time it rains and check on it.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And that mulch out there, that's just good.
Yeah, but there's still a couple piles there, and we've had complaints that it's too big, we get time to kick out whatever. So we can either buy mulch, we could go with gravel, we got it, South Estates is usually the least expensive out in December, or price sheet, get ideas. Then you recommend, I think it's eighty-seven gravel is the one that you're talking about.
Yeah.
And he said it's still angular, that it kind of maybe retraction with a some, that maybe an entire walking trail with gravel.
I think we got some good mulch, that's the, that's the thing.
They call it hillbiker, because it stays in place when it rains, they stay in place and have a tree.
They're going to have to remove it off some big old streets before you can any real move. Does he not have any cypress mulch up there by the way?
He had, yeah, there were prices, he was sending his price sheet, it's on that. So he was just saying, if you're having, especially the areas that will have any consistent problems with, either put in a drain or be gravel in those areas. He said you can even do it where parts are gravel, parts are mulch, just depending on what.
Them mulch, pea gravel number eighty-nine is six twenty-five.
Yeah, the pea gravel is amazing, it's one of the.
Yeah, and pressure running is four fifty, or sixteen to eighteen tons. You get that much here.
Get a ton of mulch.
Yeah, well, he said some of the stuff you need to probably get from them and help them deliver and say, it depends on what you get. If you're getting mulch, they're usually the least expensive gravel, there's probably options that don't cost as much.
This place down here, Ace Turkey, you want to sell mulch, ten mils, on the ride down here.
Is it Cowherd?
Yeah.
They brought our stuff last time, and we, they went through them to get whatever. I was just getting ideas, just to see if we're getting mulch, if we're getting whatever.
Yeah, some cypress mulch, but I'm sure it works, and then they don't jump, that's.
Yeah, and there's, if that mulch is portable.
Those rural saturated spots, might need dug out and some gravel put in, I'll tell you.
That's what he said. That or installing some small drain system that just kind of diverts the water underground and then you have to step over it.
Yeah, if they go through those shovels and hit them spots, they have a whole bunch, just let that water drain through after every rain, but we've had it twenty, it's still metres of rain.
It's not little, no, it's not.
But there was one spot that was pretty bad.
Yeah, there's.
A shovel, I think they picked towards the drain.
You want them to try to pick it up or not?
I think they could.
Well, we bundle it out and then put something.
Yeah, I feel like they're trying to push onions, and I don't know when that's going to, they did go through there and fix it where they can drain for the time being, and fix it after it dries out. You could get a lot of mulch, you let them put some more mulch on it, probably.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we need to definitely get one mulch, but it feels like it's not.
Yeah. And they, uh, about a fourth of a lot of the pressure run out there, they can put on a driveway after, put in potholes on it. It's already out there.
Are you, the ones on the side, you know, that are looking at the other big two?
Yeah, getting back there. We could put pipe, I'll say, there if we need to, but you can't do nothing right now, but. So we want to go ahead and put mulch down? Well, we could give a lot of the nun scattered, not washed twice, but I think they'll go and pick up a bunch of that big stuff or whatever. But not close that lower bridge that's running until we get them claimed.
We're going to see one more than mulch is right out, I think last time they showed it, it was pretty total.
Just tell you, don't move sign blank.
You go in, pal.
Well, I think Cowherd is a bigger load too, like the one up here, I think it's like a forty-five percent, one down there, one down.
We all in agreement, is that?
Yeah.
Mine must have had a new one, new road, constant.
Yeah. Why don't we all think we need to, I just wanted to get ideas on.
Okay, discuss Pickens Street Road shoulder.
Okay, so, last year, we voted to fix the shoulder up there. And we use splosh guns to do it, but we actually don't own that part of the road, so are we proceeding with having them fix it? Or are we backing off? So he says there's another way to go and do like an intergovernmental thing where you kind of split it with the county just to get it done. But I don't want to use splosh guns on something that aren't ours.
I just give, Pickens will tell them to fix it, it's better.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, Kyle, Mr. Gulforth would take more, would run into her.
Yeah, well, we gave him the go-ahead.
Yeah.
I've talked to him a couple times, but this was, that was back in the days when he still hadn't gone here, because I know he was backed up with stuff, so.
You want to go ahead and collie him off?
We didn't want to.
If it's long, we can have anything, yeah. And we might get Mr. Jones and then. You don't make a motion there? Oh, no.
Yeah. Make a motion to cancel the visa or whatever that process would be on the road shoulder repair.
I see.
All in favor? Okay, discuss and vote on that time, Pickens County, change from that.
This was something we did two years ago, and they're, I guess, down to the last box. He brought in the current ones, we only have the old ones left. But he said, obviously, if we do it, we would change the logo and stuff. This is basically what it looked like, the picture from the front. We changed it out and updated, and then he had sent over a copy of the invoice from the last time he did it. The price one is the same. But it's a cheaper ad.
Me personally, I'd rather have another dump for a day or two instead, instead of that.
That's what I'm calling it.
What's that, this? Yeah, I mean, everybody gets something out of it.
Has anybody ever looked at that map before? I don't know, I mean, however.
They got two years.
However many they ordered or down the last box, which I don't know how they're giving them out either, and we have a box of the old ones in there.
I don't know.
And we're still in there. You can imagine.
I'll find out.
That's what it is.
Sure enough.
All right, that.
Yeah, I'd rather have a dumpster day or something, you know, out there.
Okay, well, wouldn't.
Not do it.
Uh, who's going to make a motion, I'll do it.
Make a motion, we don't do it.
Second.
I see.
All in favor? Okay, discuss on a couple of fancy words, U S T I N A S Y S T software options, net and code enforcement.
That's the software system, Miranda and I, they just have demo online, so they can actually go through and make different modules for each item that you want. And they have one for building enforcement, they have one for code enforcement, they have one for, you know, business licenses, just to track them, so stuff goes out on time. You know, it's just kind of like, it's just a process, like kind of checking boxes, like you can't move to the next step until this is done. It'll alert you if something expires, if it means to be renewed, and kind of puts, like you can go in and find like one person in the city and everything, like if they have a building permit, they have trash, or if they have property taxes. It just kind of combines everything into one, like one area, you can go and find everything a little bit easier and can track it and keep up with it. And the licensing fees, the one time, three hundred and five, and then it's one eighteen in here, which is less than, and we've just got the new invoice for the stuff that they, that we currently have. I tried to take screenshots and they were all very, just showing the different things, which were great when I was in the office, but it's kind of like we're going to have to check on the back of the bank statement. Can't really see what's what in there, but you can find out a list of who has a permit, when it's expired, who has a business license, when it expired, active or inactive, if they canceled it. It's just an organizational tool, I guess, to kind of dump things down and make it easier to track things and keep up with them.
I believe that, like for the business license, that would be a really good way to increase our revenue.
Yes.
To be able to keep up with it, to be able to maintain and monitor it and send out late notices, just like she said. Right now, we're using a spreadsheet, so I'm almost positive that we would get better outcome of that as far as our revenue if we were to do this. Just like she said, we sat for the demo and it incorporates into the system so well and makes everything kind of talk. I think that it kind of would be really super beneficial if we save the business, the building permits and stuff, the same thing. You can build it and make it however you want, you put your fees in there, it would increase everything as far as revenue, efficiency, definitely.
Well, it simplifies things too.
It simplifies everything, and I'm just saying, I don't know what's going to happen going forward with these intergovernmental agreements, but it would simplify and make everything work, be more efficient, about equalizing those modules. I definitely think business licenses, we don't do anything else, we should definitely do that, because I think we're losing some serious revenue on outside companies.
Well, it's unfortunate too, because you don't want to place everything's in, and then if you need to sign it for somebody to investigate, you can see what, who it was assigned to, if they agreed with it or disagreed with it.
Yeah. It keeps a running law.
Instead of it just being something on it where you put it in a draft and pulls up whatever the letter was, and you have to go through it file, find the complaint, it goes with the letter.
And it actually turns out a professional letter from the system. You put a template in there with code enforcement. So when you pull up that property or that parcel number or whatever address, when you put it in there, it's going to pull that, it's going to pull the tax records, it's going to pull the sanitation, if they have sanitation, it's going to pull the code enforcement. It just simplifies, it makes everything right there, extra payments, is that what I'm looking for?
See, I'll do it later. I want to wait to see if we get something in place for Cherokee and Pickens County, I think they have a way to structure this.
Well, I did look through some of that too, and I know I said something to chat about it, but there's, and again, it's just clarification on some of that, because whenever I was reading through it, I, I went to Cherokee County this week, because we had stuff that was going out, just to make sure that we're diagnosed across the fees kind of thing. But they have like an impact fee now, if you put any building out, you get hit with a fifteen hundred dollar fee. And if we're into that M S A agreement, it said that the fees are, cannot be less than what the county charges. They're now requiring rendered drawings for projects turned in, whereas before you could kind of sketch it out as long as everything was the way it was. And I think Pickens still allows a lot of that, and they don't have the impact fees. So there were some big price discrepancies between the two counties and the requirements that Cherokee has versus the requirements that Pickens has. So it's just stuff to kind of keep in mind, because I was initially in the depression, they were going by our codes and limits, and I'm not sure that that's going to be the case.
That's why, so it reads the.
It does, but then if you read it, it's like, because I was doing the same thing, and then as I would reread it, it kind of, it just appeared that that wasn't really the case.
Well, that's something we need to find that for sure.
Well, because the impact fees are huge, and I know there's actually talk of possibility of financing in, putting in favor.
Those impact fees have been in place for twenty years, Cherokee County.
I know, but Pickens doesn't have them, so if you live in the city.
I don't know that very well.
And on Cherokee.
I'm not sure they can charge them here. That's something y'all want to.
But they're, what the, what the agreement says, the fees could be lower than what the county charges.
I don't think they're going to impact.
They may have other problems, I'm an actual.
We can look into it.
Well, and it's like if they give the neighborhood.
I think that. They're more likely to want our problem, right? Way to raise in the. Well, we don't have staffing for what needs to be done, when you still have it.
I'd say wait on that until we see what's going to happen with the.
I feel sorry.
You going to look into that, Dale?
Yeah, I'll check.
Okay, next I will see tree renewed and discuss the letter.
Did you, did she tell you what she wanted to say about the tree?
What?
She wanted amended the.
I just have, I just stuck it in there already, because the guys would come in and ask about it, that are they willing to go ahead about some of the else's eyes on it? There's two trees that really need to come out, one's up where the marble building was, it's just, Ricky said when they used to mow, like the branches weren't really laying, and they're not enough to, for it's. Trying to get low. And the other one is when you're coming into town from Ball Ground, there's one on the right side, like right near that triangle that keeps leaning further over.
Right, yeah.
He originally said he thought it would be caught up in the, the line, and so I was going to just call the power company or the phone company, but he came back in today and said he didn't think it would, and he was going to close the road for a second while they cut it and pulled it off.
And I'm, to cut that one is to replace it.
Yeah, replace it.
The one up here?
Yeah, yeah. This other one, this, that one makes, is that some Cherokee County can come out, there's some traffic control on them, make out if they cower.
Sure.
No problem.
They don't, really, we're all in agreement. Ricky not comfortable with that.
Yeah, he's the one that asked me if it could, but I didn't, I'm sure.
All right, this brings us down to the technical system. Yeah, neat discussion of letters. They.
Oh.
That was an, that was an add-on.
Yeah, I'm just, I find we, I think we're all in agreement, these letters we're sending out, it's got their name on them, I'd like to have a copy before it goes out. And then I'd like to have a copy of every one of them that's sent out, whoever gets the letter, just well. Make us five copies, not those, nobody's going out, because if somebody accuses us or something, it may be a wire.
So do you want a copy of it after it goes out, or do you want me to take the names off of it and just have it work as a city letterhead?
Or just see the letterhead and just make a copy, I will. Because I'm locked up, I have my name on it, but I'm not.
Yeah, I can get that.
We need to vote on that and let that.
It's up to y'all.
I do, we got one, too.
Yeah, because I don't think there was an official format, we just like copied and paste it, would have been previously, it was kind of just a template, so to speak, so that was just copied in and you put whatever it is in there and.
I mean, I had two stuck in the door of my, of the house, and I didn't know where they was from or nothing.
Did you get that email that linked it to the online that made it a little easier to find, so I was trying to be through?
We have some of them.
Yeah, paint book.
Now, could we, is there any label reasons we could hear the anonymous reporting?
Totally up to y'all.
I wouldn't do that. Because there's people that have legitimate complaints, that are seriously worried about retaliation, and they will not say anything.
Can you not keep the, can we keep their information confidential?
I asked that in one of the training sessions, and you can't legally black out names from someone, you can't redact it, I asked that last year, because we were...
It's an open record once somebody submits.
Now, I verify it, like, if somebody comes in and says it, if, you know, we had fun about a car...
That's what I was curious about, if we could, if they could put the information down, and we could see it, but it, you know, if it's a confidential thing.
It would be...
Yeah, the person, that is the one thing somebody did complain about, always wants to know, and all they have to do is request that information, and we have to give it to them.
And people do come down, bring it up for requests, when they get it.
But they can do it on the record, whereas they definitely have paper trails.
You have to give them anything that you want to...
Well, I think they might say to pick it up, I mean, not require it to be a raise.
Our policy states it can be.
I think the law states it can be, we do that before, that's why, but...
I mean, like, if they come in for an open record request, you gotta have it written where somebody's complaining about.
No.
I mean, how do you do an open record request on it?
You can only give them what you have, it's kind of like when you go through the training, and I'll talk about, like, text message, like, I don't ever delete anything from my phone, I don't delete any emails that have whatever, so somebody comes in and requests that they can have it, but anything that's already gone, you can't do it if an open record request is on that doesn't exist. But there have been numerous people that have come in and made complaints, especially one of the more notorious people we've had to send stuff forward, that have legitimate complaints and legitimate concerns for retaliation, because there has been some towards others because of that. But it's like, at the same time, it's like, can't, there is verification, like, it's, it's not one person saying something, just to try to get, you know, make their neighbor angry or something, but the policy states that it can be verbal, and I'm sure that is the reason behind it.
Mr. Jim, can I ask a question, if you, if the members will allow me to speak?
Yes.
Concerning complaints, I believe we have within the city a form to submit complaints.
We do.
Yeah.
And we use it for anybody that wants to come in and submit.
And once those have been submitted, then they're subject to open records.
Yes.
And I don't believe there's, you allow a complaint anonymous, don't the complaint form have a place for a second time?
It does, if you use the complaint form, that it's like the policy, because we brought this up a couple months ago, it was the same question that's popped up, and in the policy it states that you can receive verbal complaints, and a code enforcement, like, in the back of the policy book.
Right, my recommendation would be that you use the complaint form as we have in the past, and don't try to figure out how to cover stuff up, like, make it transparent, so that if anybody has a problem, they can come back and read the form.
I get what you're saying, but what I'm saying, there's already been retaliation towards people, we've had tire slash, we've had trash dumping people's yards, we've had due to complaints, and they've come and filled out.
That's really not a valid, uh, excuse for not following the wrong procedure.
But our procedure states we can have a verbal complaint, because that happens in the back of our policy book.
Well, anybody could, they can complain at any one of the city council people, if they wanted to remain anonymous, if that's the way, and I know, I know from having read some of the, uh, literature, some of our procedural forms, it says one source of the complaints are the elected officials, so, that's one way, but if you're gonna say, our policy within the city is you must submit your complaint on the city, uh, developed form...
Yeah.
Then do it across the board, do it all the time, don't just...
I know what you're saying, I'm what you're saying.
Pick and choose how you want, either...
I agree, and it is, but our policy states that you can do a verbal complaint, so I'm saying that it's like, we are going by our rules, because it's what it says.
But if you're allowing this verbal complaint as a way to cover it up, so nobody can use the open records, that's inappropriate.
But that's not covering it up, it's a matter of protecting someone's safety, because some of these are elderly people that come in and say something, and if they're worried about their safety, because they said something, and their fear would keep them from coming in and saying, hey, this is going on, then how do you find out about it? I mean, this, this has legitimately come up recently, where it is somebody that's elderly, or somebody that comes in, and they're like, hey, this is going on, and they will not put their name on the complaint form, because there's already been retaliation towards others that have done so, documented retaliation, so how do you tell that elderly person that their complaint isn't valid, because they don't want to retaliate against for saying something?
I'm an elderly person, and I think I could handle that situation, because I know how to do it online, one-on-one.
I'm just saying, that's what, I mean, our policy states that you can do it, there's not many that do it that way, but there have been a few that have come in, and I've had several people come in, they will bring stuff up, and they, they do not want their name on something, it's just kind of like, hey, you need to know this is going on.
Well, I would say if they convince you, as a member of the city, official member of the city, if they convince you verbally that you have a problem, uh, there is a problem that exists, then you could handle it directly without filling out the form, but I would think you would document it in some form, if somebody comes in with a complaint that you're gonna handle within the city, you gotta have some kind of tracking system if somebody came back later, say there was a lawsuit or something.
We can start that, but it's still a matter of, and I guess I'm looking at it more when it's somebody that's elderly, or when it's a, a single woman that lives alone, and we've had tire slash, we've had blatant retaliation that if it's, I don't know, I mean, if that was my grandmother living up there, and I wouldn't want her afraid to come down here and say something, because she didn't want to go out the next morning and have a tire slash, there's people walking up and down the street with baseball bats, I mean, it's kind of a, it's just, there's a fine line there, so at what point is a complaint not valid?
I'm thinking of the other side of the argument, like, I understand that side, but like, what, what I'm talking about, the anonymous complaints, is like, it keeps, it, the, the ordinance violations and codes and stuff can be used to target people...
They could, yeah.
If it's anonymous, and there's no...
But that's why there's also, if there's something that's questionable, that I'm not sure if it's, it's kind of like when I was sent all the texts, hey, we had a complaint, somebody wants letters sent out, everything's been in their garbage can up the street. Yeah, you can read through the, the, the book, and you could interpret it to mean you can't leave your hand there, but it does not specify you can't leave your hand there, or if it's somebody that, the ones that have come in repeatedly continue to fill out the complaint forms, the ones I'm talking about, that come in that are verbal, are the ones that you rarely hear from, so if they're coming down, and they get to the point they're saying something, and it's a known issue in the area, then you know it's a valid complaint. If it's somebody coming and complaining about a, you know, some junk car, then we, oh, we'll check it, I'm not gonna just send somebody a letter, because somebody says they don't like their neighbor, and they don't like the car they have sitting there in the yard.
Kelsey, what's in the file back, where you said that it had to be on paper, they had to sign it, and they thought, and admitted to that, that complaints had died down a lot, because we have chronic complainers, with nothing better to do.
There are some that have that.
I know, and that's their hobby, that's their hobby, and that's their fun in life, and it just makes it verbal, but, uh...
We did think that that's it, but in the policy book, it does state that you can take a verbal complaint, there's not been many that come in that do verbal, there is very few, and it is usually extenuating circumstances, because most of the times it's kind of...
A lot of times it's just to get a neighbor for a vengeance of some sort, and when it just even...
I know what you're saying, but it's still, it's verified, and it's, I mean, there's some that come in, and it's kind of like, it's, it's not valid, and I'm not gonna send somebody a letter just to harass them about something that's, doesn't disown an appeal, or that we don't have a policy specifically stating.
I like policy, but it's on the paper. We got questions up in the direction, the paper.
So, if you're calling C-Mans to, to report a drug dealing, you want the drug dealers to find out, they want to go do an, uh, open records request to know who you were reporting?
Call them, I don't know what they have.
That's, yeah.
So, you can't get that.
We don't have criminal cases, I mean, not currently.
There's still retaliation that we order on that, that you know that's what it is, but you can't, you can't prove it, I guess is the best way to prove it.
I, I understand the protecting the people that's right in the compliance, but, but people that could potentially be targeted isn't one of them protected, too.
Oh, I agree with you.
That's my argument on the thing, that's, that's the only reason I'm running it up.
I know, I, I mean, I get what you're saying, but it's, again, it's...
The question is whether that person is really violating the code, if they're violating the code...
They are violating the code, and it has been checked, and if, if it's the ones that I'm thinking that you're referring to...
Oh, I don't, I don't know what you're referring to, I'm talking about several different.
I know, but there's several that, if it's the ones that I think that you're talking about, there's things that I can tell you that I wouldn't say in here, because I don't want it coming back on people, on either side, I don't want names brought up into that at all.
That's all I had on that, so, did you have anything else?
Okay, I get a motion to lose the executive session.
Make a motion, lose the executive session, sir.
All in favor?